Second, twenty twenty five, we have introductions, please.
Mark Rich, board member.
Vince Messer, board member.
John Vallejo, chair.
Rick Lyles, vice chair.
Mike Kang, board member.
And staff introductions, please.
Robert Grant, floor clerk, sir.
Thomas Gannon, fire inspector.
Fire guy. Okay, item number two, adoption of minutes from the March fifth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. Any additions or derisals? Anyone want to make a motion?
Got it.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
A new role.
Item number three, preliminary plan review of a major used site development plan entitled Dice Arts Convenience Store for applicant and owner Dice Art Realty Operations LLC. The proposal is construct a convenience store, car wash, and retail space. Subject property is approximately two point eight zero acres, located at two sixty nine, two seventy one High Street, tax map one twenty eight lots two and three, located on commercial zoning district. Is there someone here representing Dice Arts?
Scott Braley with Plymouth Engineering, Mr. Chair.
Go for it.
Okay, what I'd like to do is step to the easel, if you don't mind, and walk you through the project description, and then I'll sit back down and take any questions that you
Absolutely. Brittany tried to give me to do it on the scene, so old school allowed us to do something out of my way.
Me too, I use the camera.
Do we need a mic for him? He just got one, just like that.
We share.
Okay, can everybody hear me better now?
Well, it's more that the broadcasting people watching.
So, Mr. Chair, as you mentioned, this is a proposed project for Dice Arts, and the project in general is the location of the current Elsro car wash, formerly a marine dealership, before that, I think it was even Agway maybe years ago. The entire two point eight acres at this point is basically disturbed. The entire perimeter of the project will remain what we would call a disturbed state, although we're going to be reducing the amount of impervious area, reducing the amount of roof area, and increasing the landscape area. So, the plan is to immediately go in and demolish the two boat storage buildings and sales buildings and start construction of the convenience store. Once a con... So those, in general, everything on the site is going, except for the existing underground storage tank which holds fuel, that's a relatively new tank, that will remain in service even with a new facility. The plan is to go in, demolish the two boat-related buildings first, build a convenience store, diesel island behind, gas island in the front. Once those are operational, the two car washes will be demoed, and the new tunnel car wash will be constructed. All of those are scheduled for, well, let me step back. The convenience store is scheduled to be complete and operable by end of December, and the car wash will start in early twenty twenty six, and then later in twenty twenty six is when the retail store will be constructed, okay? There's some things that you may or may not have heard going forward. We have already applied for an opening permit for High Street because sewer and water facilities told us we needed new services because of the existing conditions. So, the code office has already granted us an opening permit so that we can get those services out of the street in April before DOT starts their milling, shimming, and paving of High Street. They've got, you guys got a lot going on in town this year with paving with those guys, but we're going to try to get right out of the way before Memorial, before Memorial Day weekend, we will be out of High Street. And then we'll be doing demo during April and starting construction in June. Again, so we're constructing a fifty four hundred and fifty five square foot convenience store, eight gas fueling stations, two diesel fueling stations, and then there'll be retail propane sales that has been there forever, and the car wash. This will be a new tunnel car wash, different than what is out here now. The new tunnel car wash will all be completely tipped from the exit back to the entrance a little bit for a couple of reasons. That's the way their drainage and everything works now, but it also gets all the water out of the tailgate of a pickup truck that has historically been being dragged out onto High Street, which we understand has been an issue in the past. So that'll take care of that. The, the circulation is primarily one-way around the site. There's a one-way entrance, one-way exit. These have been identified and located through staff meetings and DOT meetings. I do need to take just a second, too. I was remiss in saying, I want to thank staff here, they've been very patient with me, we've met twice, a lot of great ideas have come out of those meetings, and Brittany is, is working hard to take, to deal with being new at the position, and she's done a great job so far with us at least. With regard to the site itself, we're, as I said, we're reducing impervious area. The car wash currently out there has a road behind it, doing the armpit, that'll be gone, that'll be landscaped. The, the entrance that is currently very close to the road for Dairy Queen is being relocated up the hill, a couple in the middle being eliminated, and the one that's the furthest up the hill is being moved down the hill to avoid the cutovers from Short Street. That was a concern by your public safety as well as DOT, so we've moved that downhill. So we have one way in, one way out, right turn in, right turn out. From a traffic perspective, it's, it's a really easy and safe, safe site that way. Grading wise, as you're well aware, having, I'm sure, been out there, there's a retaining wall between what was previously the two lots, that'll be gone. The left side of the lot will remain about as it is elevation-wise, the right side of the lot will come up where the boat buildings were, is coming up, so that we can provide good grades in and out of the site, as well as take more water back on the site than to the front of the site, again, getting it off High Street. We are reducing the impervious area, stormwater calculations show we'll be reducing all the storms going off the site. And, and then I'll talk just a little bit more about the utilities. The sewer waters, I mentioned, are being worked on as soon as we can get out there before northeast paving starts working, because it is a fairly complex site with all the fuel lines, propane lines, et cetera. We're going to be tapping into the sewer line down near the lower entrance. We show a manhole right now, although in our latest meeting, staff suggested that they may, in order to help out with the High Street work, just have us do a sanitary Y there, come onto the site, and then put a manhole, so that we are not disrupting High Street as much. We're going to be taking out some existing granite curb, putting in some new granite curb, and then with regard to the water services, the site will be served completely from, from the location that is the current service for the car wash. Be a new service in, metering will all be done in the, in the car wash, and then both of the other buildings will be served out of that building. And again, sewer is all going to be collected and discharged in one location as well. We will have power coming across High Street with a new pole, all the poles that are out in the middle of these two lots now will be gone, and then underground from there to a transformer vault that'll serve the car wash and the, excuse me, the convenience store and the retail store. So, all the utilities will be underground, other than just that stub pole coming across High Street where we'll need to do a drop to get the underground electric. There will, the fuel, as I said, the underground storage tank will stay, fuel will be supplied to the gas island, there will be a new DEP permitted underground storage tank, six thousand gallon tank for diesel for the fueling positions out back, and then there will be three one thousand gallon propane tanks in the back, two to fuel the store, and one that'll be used for the, for the retail where you can go get your twenty pound cylinder for the gas grill filled, similar to what goes on now. One of the things that we looked at carefully that the, the public safety folks wanted to make sure of is we have shown that with the new curb cuts, that we can circumvent the site with the fire trucks in case they need to get in there for any reason. There is one, one thing that I know that in the package you have was a little bit of a shortcoming, and that was the lighting plan, and that is because we had a little bit of spillover on High Street and on the Toothache property next door. Literally, and that's the plan you have here, we had some point threes and point twos and a point nine and a one here, and in High Street, we had a couple of point sevens. I literally got an email from the electrical people this afternoon on my way down here, that has been resolved, they've moved a couple of poles so that we have no spillover anywhere on the site. Now, as the DOT finishes their permitting, because this does have a traffic movement permit that has been submitted, is being reviewed, and we submitted a copy of that application to you, if they, because DOT typically will require a certain foot candle level at entrances, and usually it's like a one to two or something like that, I think, if my mind says right, so we may end up, depending upon what they say, having to deal with staff and you folks to say, okay, DOT says we've got to have a little bit of light at High Street because of the entrances, make sure we get a waiver from you folks at final or if that, if that happens, okay? The retail building is going to be only two units. That was a question that came up during staff review because we wanted to make sure that we were dealing with fire protection correctly, so they have, the owner has committed that that building will only be two units. Loading zone is shown, the tunnel wash has positions for six people to be queued that have paid, two paying, and eighteen waiting in the double lanes. So we literally have room for over forty cars if the car wash gets that busy. We've taken it around to the back. The other thing that came out of the pre-scoping meeting with DOT is that when the Dairy Queen was developed, the DOT permit required them to grant easement, an access easement to this property for cross-access between the two properties. We didn't know about it until the pre-scoping meeting, so we revised the plans, and we actually will be constructing this cross driveway to our property line. And the Dice Arts are currently trying to contact the owners of the mall to see if they will do the other side or what will happen, so that there can be some cross-access there, which obviously keeps a bunch more vehicles off High Street when they're trying to go from one site to the other. Those are the highlights, and so I will take my seat unless you need me to point to something and answer whatever questions you may have.
Could you possibly explain to me, sir, Scott, the retail units, are those going to be subleased or are those part of the Dice Art operation?
They won't be leased, yes.
I see.
They will be leased, and they will be strictly mercantile, another thing that we discussed with staff.
Yes.
To make sure there's not, there'll be no food service in there, coffee shops, anything like that, it'll be strictly retail mercantile.
I have a question about the fuel, gasoline pumps and so on. Have you given any consideration to electric vehicles and?
We have not at this site. We did at their last site because it was required by the town of Orano's ordinances. It is something that I certainly can bring up to them. I know that they have not, they have not put them in in Orano yet, but it is something I know that they have given consideration to.
Okay.
Obviously, being that they are petroleum-based company, that's where they got their start, their, their, their preference from a business perspective is for...
Well, you got to pay for the electricity, too.
Understood, understood.
It could be a little generator out there, you know?
I had a second question, it was just about the traffic flow to the car wash. Wait, goes, does it go through where the employee parking is?
It does.
Okay.
It goes through there, but from that point, when they leave the employee parking, we have the thirty six, forty two, forty four spaces beyond there.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that going to be marked in any way for pedestrians in there?
There will be signage there, and if I don't have that on there, I apologize, but there will be signage for two, you know, directional to the car wash.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I'll make sure that gets added for final.
I would also hasten to add, I'd never want to be the eighteenth car in line for the car wash.
Well, the good news about this site is actually as you're driving in, you're literally going to be able to see every car in line, and so if it's longer than you want to be there, you can drive around the back of the, of the store. The vacuum stations will be along the side of the car wash, so there's an opportunity for you to go vacuum your car. I'm doing sales now, vacuum your car while you wait for the line to get shorter.
And that's what, the vacuums sites are along the car wash.
That's right, yes, yep.
So, I have a couple of questions for you. Your, in your letters request to the water company and the sewer department, wastewater department, Amy identifies basically just one building, just the convenience store. She hasn't said anything about the added store as far as the square footage on that. I don't know if that needs to be added.
You're talking about the water and sewer letters?
Yeah, so the water sewer letters, it's her request for the water and sewer, but she did, all they make mention of is just the square footage of the convenience store, but they don't say anything about the added.
Yeah, because I had, I had those flagged, because on the, I mean, you specify that eight hundred seventy two gallon per day demand on the water company, but in, in the application, so...
I'm looking for that as well, you're...
It's kind of...
I think in the application, it specifies forty eight hundred sixty two gallons per day, including the car wash, but I mean, the letters to water and sewer make it sound like there's not going to be any car wash. Granted, the water is currently available there for the car wash, but I agree with Mike, I think that letter from Plymouth should say what the total gallons per day.
Yeah, between the car wash, the convenience store, and...
And the, and the...
And, and the mercantile.
Right.
Yeah, so, like I say, so it does, it says that, but the other question I have for you is that in her letter, she states that the convenience store is forty nine hundred and fifty square feet, and on your plan, it's fifty four hundred and fifty five.
Yeah, she is, I, I, I'm sorry.
So, I'm thinking, if I'm not mistaken, as I looked at that and I did some measurements, it looks to me like there is maybe a walk-in freezer, cooler outside of that building? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and then the entrance way?
The entrance way.
And so I subtracted those from that, I came pretty close to the forty nine hundred.
That is, that is what I was just going to say, is I'm sure that's why I got left out of that number.
All right, so I, I was wondering if that's what that was. The other thing is, is this a twenty-four hour convenience store, you know? Are they going to be open twenty-four hours?
I, no, I'm going to say no. I'll clarify that for our final submittal, but none of their convenience stores are open twenty-four hours.
Okay, so is the gas island's going to be twenty-four hour pump?
I, I'm going to have to check that.
Okay, that would be something that you folks would need to know. So, I think that's all I got for right now.
I got a bunch.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is in no particular order other than how I got them in the, in the whole here. You talked about, and you, and you mentioned before that you had decreased the impervious area.
Correct.
So, my question is, just as, for information is, where is the area that was previously impervious and it's not impervious now?
A, a bunch of it is, is the, the area where the diesel underground storage tank is, the propane tank, that's going to be grass.
Oh, okay.
Other than where the above-ground propane tanks stand.
Okay.
Okay, to the left of the car wash, adjacent to the Toothache property is, it's going to be, and then on the right-hand side, as you enter, the entrance currently next to Dairy Queen now is right next to the property line, and that's all yard right straight back. And so everything above, if you look, looking at the plan, above and beyond, and below the retail building will now be landscaped.
Okay.
So basically, it's the perimeters, if I can, I mean, the perimeters for a lot of it.
I was going to carry that, they were doing some impervious so much.
Yeah, well, now we know.
Yep.
And this is just a, a question of my ignorance, you're talking about the landscaping along High Street and so forth, does the Arbor Commission have any review here on this stuff at this point? Or, I mean, do they have a role at all?
We can consult them before final.
Well, I just want to know whether, whether by rule that we need to or whatever.
It's not in the ordinance that we need to consult them, but it...
Okay.
It'd be a bad idea.
I had that down, too, because I looked up Tillia Americana, and those end up...
It's an American tree, by the way.
Oh, okay, it's a bastard, as a matter of fact, and they can range from sixty to one hundred thirty feet high.
And that was one, that was one of the species that was on the, in the city's list, and so we actually have a landscape architect on staff, and I asked them about that, and they said next to the road, saw pavement closed, that was a good one to plant. If the Arbor Commission comes back and says, we'd rather see these, because I think those match what's on the opposite side of High Street, I think that's why we ended up with them.
Because they can, their crown can be thirty to fifty feet wide, I'm just, I'm more concerned...
It is big.
Not if they get that high, but more as they're growing, if that's going to interfere with visibility, especially coming out of the property.
And speaking of that very thing, the, the, kind of the last tree in the row before you get to the driveway, to, to the left in the drawing, make sure that that doesn't really get in the way of site distance.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it does, but I didn't do any calculations, and you should, just to confirm that that happens. And in terms of asking, I mean, you know, I have nothing against asking the Arbor Commission, but I don't think they get to reject things necessarily, but advice would be good. And, you know, they supposedly are dealing with the street trees all the time and so forth, so, you know, please do it.
We are certainly not stuck on that species of tree.
Oh, no, I, well, you know, I just, I envisioned them falling out of a High Street, actually, if it wasn't the truth. The rest, I think, has to do with, there's the highway road opening location application, which you talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it states that the starting date for doing stuff in the street is April first, an interesting...
That was, that was a, that was a dream when we put it in.
That was a joke, right?
There was a dream when we put it in.
Well, I can tell you, northeast paving was out there today doing some work, right? They stayed right, right there.
Okay, so my, my question is just, if, if this runs past the twenty-first of April, does this, does this permit or whatever need to be renewed or whatever, if we just, it's just good to go?
Good.
Okay, I mean, I, I thought it was a good idea to do it in advance and not dig up a new street, I mean, who calls that right?
We agreed.
Okay.
That's why we scrambled.
Has the pre-scoping meeting actually occurred?
Yes, it was last week here.
With them, Doc?
With the, yep, with DOT.
Okay.
They are actually the ones that required us to put the connection to the budding property in the back.
Oh, in the back there, okay, all right. So, I have a couple of questions about coming out of the, coming out of the street, coming out of the street, coming out of the facility and turning right towards the hill, and the traffic analysis, and, and, you know, I think they did a pretty thorough job, and most of the things they got right and so forth, but on none of their drawings and considerations do they have any consideration of Short Street, okay? So, when you look at the traffic counts and, you know, the traffic assignment and which goes where and all that, literally, Short Street is not shown on those drawings, okay? Which implies that it wasn't considered, although when you talk about crashes, it is considered to a degree. And I think it's a real, I, I guess, all things considered, because I like the idea that you're going from four curb cuts to two right along there, that's a good thing, because fewer is better, right? But the real problem is coming, either coming out of the car wash, for example, or the gas station or wherever, people will in fact turn right and then immediately turn left or go diagonally across Short Street, and I'm not sure what more you can do, okay? But I think ignoring them is not one of the things that you do, right? And I, I think that it needs to be looked at and considered if there's anything else that can be done to alleviate that, because if you look at the crash record, which you also put in here, or they put in here, which is, again, a good thing. Many of the crashes that are attributable, attributable to Short Street are right at the intersection, okay? They, they, if you look at the diagrams, the, the idea is that there, as the cars come out of that facility, you know, they hit something because they want to go up there and make a left, or alternatively, cars want to come down Short Street and make a left. And, you know, because the other thing is that the one-way in and one-way out and on one direction, that's all good, okay? But basically, there will be some people who use this who want to turn left, which is illegal, obviously, and this whole analysis kind of implies that they'll go up to the red light on top of the hill and make their left turn up there and come all the way back around, and I don't think that many of them will actually do that, they will make a left turn and onto Short Street. So, there needs to be some, some attention paid to that, although I'm not exactly sure that you can come up with anything that's been better than you already have, okay?
I, I know that that was a subject that was discussed last week.
Well, you said that they, you moved the driveway or whatever.
And that was part of the reason for moving that down the hill, to try to discourage people from turning right out of Short Street and cutting across, but also gave people more time to pull out and try to, if they wanted to go to Short Street, get, oh, across those lanes, which is not a great maneuver, in my opinion.
It's not a great maneuver regardless, okay? And so, moving, moving the driveway, you know, back towards town a little bit like you have, is, is not a bad idea, at the same time, it really makes you have two distinct turns then, you turn out, then you turn left, and as it is now with the driveway more up the hill, it's more of a straight shot. It's still a bad situation regardless of how you do it, but, but there should be some, some mention of that in here, that, that, some acknowledgement of that at least.
I will discuss it with the traffic engineer.
There you go, because I, and I, you know, she's pretty good and she will, you know, I'm sure she's already thought about it, but nonetheless.
And I've tried to think of some signage they could put up on, you know, on Short Street, too, they, they cut across, they may be a little dissuaded to do that now where the entrance to the car wash is further north, but there's still going to be some that come out of Short Street and cut across.
I mean, we do have the standard, like on the exit, we have two-stop signs, we have no-left-turn signs, or right-turn only signs, I can't remember which that was.
Which is a good thing.
And then on the entrance, you know, we have facing the site signs that say do not enter, so people don't use that when people try and come in to come out as well, so we've tried to accommodate some of that stuff with signage.
And that's, I mean, maybe that's all you can do, all right, but that sort of thing should be, you know, clear and addressed.
Is it a realistic possibility of making Short Street one-way? So they can't turn left onto Short Street?
Uh, probably not realistic, actually.
I like unrealistic.
I, I think that's just, yeah, I don't know.
As many times I've been down here, until the DOT engineer turned on to Short Street last week when we were on the site, I didn't realize it went all the way through.
Right, 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 well, those of us who use that car wash regularly.
Right.
They, we get it, right? But anyways, when you look at the crash report, and the M dot supply is a, you know, a, a diagram that has little arrows, but all the cars crashed together and so forth, all the ones in Short Street or at that intersection occur not in the, not in High Street, or whether, they're occurring in High Street because people are turning or easing their way across or whatever, so. And there may be a need to, and this is something the city could do, is put a no-right-turn sign or whatever at the end of Short Street, because indeed, going into the car wash from Short Street is a right turn.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, and again, what's that?
It probably is now, because...
Maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, it probably is unless it's fallen down, but they would have to put one there because turning right onto the end of Short Street on the High Street, you, you're going against... you're going against one which, anyway, there probably is, but, you know, like, oh.
And maybe moving it down, and, yeah, and moving it down a little bit may well.
Dissuade people.
Dissuade people from turning right out of Short Street and going across. That may well work.
Hopefully, that was, that was the intent.
Or at least after people get used to it, because before they get used to it, they'll just make the turn into traffic and be worse. Let's see here. Do we require any screening along the boundaries for this thing? Nothing?
I can take another look at it. We did look at, we did look at that, and I think it had to deal with the uses on either side, and so that it wasn't required for this site, but that doesn't mean I got it right either.
Okay. Well, I didn't go, I didn't go look at our rules, so.
I don't, I don't recall.
I don't think that there is, but again, this is something you should check between now and whenever.
Yep.
Okay, let's see here. I also had a, a comment about EV chargers, environmentally correct. And you say that the, the other, one, one of the other concerns I had was, was the, you know, as cars exit the car wash, the water dripping off and, you know, sloshing out, and you say that the car wash itself is kind of tilted back towards the site. Is that correct?
Yes.
Which is a good thing.
Yep. And of course, the technology on the drying and the water use in this will be significantly different than what?
Better than it was, it is rather, yeah.
Yes.
Would be good. That notwithstanding, there's still water flow from the driveway itself that goes straight into the, to the driveway, and that's on both of these. For example, right by the gasoline pumps over here, the elevation is like one forty-three, and at the curb cut, it's roughly one forty. So, there's a three, so basically, there's a, there's a slope towards High Street. And I'm wondering whether, I mean, and that's all impervious.
But it's less than it is now. That's one of the things we've done with the grading, is there's less now. And right now, when you're talking about the upper end of the, of our fuel island, we're going to be headed towards High Street. Now, what it does, it comes down across the site behind the sidewalk, then all out to lower curb cut.
Okay.
Because the elevation change across the site is like four feet radius.
Okay, okay. And the, the array of gas pumps, the cars pull into those pumps perpendicular in essence to High Street, is that right? Okay. If a car comes in to, you know, for gas and gets all the way to the end without finding a spot, what do they do? Because you basically have a one-way loop around.
Well, we.
They're just kind of mander around, hoping for the best, or?
Well, I, I would think they'd go around the island itself. I mean, that's why the parking space is in front of the, the convenience store ninety-degree. And we have, we have ample aisle space all around the building and all around the fuel island for two-way traffic. If something like that, somebody's not going to be like blocking traffic or holding things up.
And there are two, two pumps per?
Yes, there's eight, there's four pump, there's four aisles, eight fueling stations.
Okay.
So, one on each side.
Yeah, 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 okay. And have you, I was a little bit concerned about queuing back from, you know, if there are cars waiting at that first pump and cars coming off the street, whether there's adequate queuing distance between, you know, the end of the car that's waiting and the car that's coming into the, into the, you know, off the street. And if there was room for two or three cars, which there probably is, but it might be nice to have a dimension or something on that, or a comment in some narrative or another. I mentioned visibility around that last tree, depending on the last tree to the left, what, what kind of tree it is and how low the branches are and so forth. It conceivably could have a, an impact on site distance, which should be avoided. Uh, let me see here. And will you have, I assume that the little, the little heavy black arrows, or you literally have dotted pavement markings? Okay. You should have those on the other side of the, in between the, the car wash and the building, so that the arrows and so forth come all the way around. Just so people don't kind of get lost out there somewhere. Where are there any, are there any catch basins or whatever on site here at all?
There are not.
Have you thought about that?
It'll be sheet flow, because the building basically splits everything.
Yeah.
Front and back.
Yeah.
That was going to be my question too, is that there's no underground stormwater lines?
No.
Okay.
No. The only, the only lines, underground lines that'll have any sort of groundwater or roof water in it will be the roof drains and the foundation drain, which will discharge behind the retail store, the top end of the retail store, into the ditch.
Say that again?
At, like the convenience store, the foundation drain, the discharge will be with the, with the retail store's foundation drain in the north, I know it's actually south, but the top end of the retail building. They'll go back there and discharge into the ditch that exists back there now beside the property between us and the Dairy Queen.
I think that, because I looked through these and I, I couldn't find any stormwater lines.
Nope, there, there are no, no catch basins, no fixed hard stormwater lines. Everything is sheet flow to either the ditch behind the car wash or the ditch between Dairy Queen and the retail to the rear, because there is a, there's actually drainage from High Street to the property line, and then from the butters, I don't know, call it esplanade between the driveway, to the property line. And then there's a ditch that goes all the way around the site. And so, that ditch will be the receptor of all the water until it gets to this catch base, uh, this culvert, which goes down and then enters the system for the, for the mall.
Oh, so, I'm sorry, say that last part again?
There's a, if you drive in the street next to Dairy Queen, between our site and Dairy Queen, you go back there ways, and before you get into the great big parking lot, there's a brand-new, I think it's twenty-four or thirty-inch HDPE culvert that takes all this water that comes down High Street into this, around our site, into this, and then back into that.
And so, you use that as well?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, except for the water in the front.
Everything currently, everything will actually make it easier.
Yeah, where you're, one with the hydraulic areas, that one.
So, here is, here's the, here's the pre-development conditions. So, everything, car wash to the property line and back with the, with the self-serve car wash, all go to that ditch that goes down this side, the back side of the, I'll call it the retail building for the, for the boats, and this maintenance yard, all go back to this ditch or over to this ditch, and then out this culvert. And then you can see right now, this is how much it currently flows to High Street.
Right.
And then, this is what will flow to High Street afterwards. This will flow to the ditch, this, and this stuff will all continue to the back. We're showing it as one watershed, because it's all going into that same ditch all the way around.
And your hydraulics guy says that that works?
Yep. If you, if you, there, I know it's voluminous, but if you look in there, the stormwater hydrology, the hydrocat is in there, and all the watersheds have lower post-development in the two, ten, twenty-five-year storm than pre-development.
Including what goes out the front to?
That's right, yep.
Okay, something to look for.
So, that, that main culvert that's put in there, the new one, that goes all the way down, then, if I'm not mistaken, does that go to Card's Brook?
What's?
Is that where that goes to?
I know, I know it goes across that access road, and then it opens back up to an open ditch.
Yep.
And that's as far as I looked at it, quite honestly.
So, I guess my question with that is if there's any kind of a major spill of any sort, and that goes into, with the water, it's going to go into that ditch down to culvert and head down towards the Brook. What, is there anything that Dice Art's going to do to help, say, take care of that problem? I know you can do this, because you and I did it before.
I mean, they, they, I mean, there will be spill containment and clean-up materials at the diesel island.
Okay.
Of course, the diesel tank is underground, the gasoline tank is underground.
Well, I'm thinking about a truck that may be offloading, that could be an issue.
They all carry, well, of course, Dice Arts will be delivering their own fuel here.
Yep.
And they, all, all the trucks have, have clean-up materials on the trucks.
Okay. Is, is there a possibility for, basically, Fire Department, that they can have on hand or stockpiled there on-site boom material to boom those ditches and stuff, so that they don't have to provide that?
Absolutely. And I almost think that is pretty standard to Dice Art sites. I think they have, because everything is green with Dice Art's, green barrels with covers on them that have booms and speedy dry or kitty litter, what have you, in the barrels.
Okay.
And I guess I'll get back to the issue of the roof drains. I mean, if, if you have drain pipes collecting water from, from the roofs going underground, I think that should be indicated on the, on the site plan.
I'll be honest with you, I didn't tell you I thought they were, so if they're not, we'll add them.
I, I looked and looked, it may be there, but I have a little disagreement with you on the stormwater for the twenty-five-year plan, because according to the calculations, there's a slight increase.
There is?
On post-development.
Well, yes, I better look at it, because I was told there was a decrease. And you are absolutely correct, there's no foundation drainage drain shown on there. I'll make sure they're added.
The twenty-five-year pre-development is eight point nine seven, and the post-development is nine point oh three.
To which, to which watershed or to that the total?
Yeah, I wish it had pages. It's a little chart, there's water quantity flooding.
No, I see it. The rear of the site goes from eight point nine seven to nine point zero three, so basically, point zero six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not big, but it's, this is an empty. Can I more?
Thank you.
You went over the lighting plan, and, and I did look at the lighting plan and, and did note that it was, there was no light spilling over on Bird's Acre, which is very critical.
Yep.
I'm, I'm sure they're very aware of this project going on, and they're going to be very cognizant of any spillover of light.
They have actually visited the site, and there is an old shed that's right out back near the property line. We're not sure exactly, but it's, it's going to be torn down, because they brought that up. They were trying to find the corners, the corners of the property, since Dice Art bought it, had not been pinned. But I, so I called, the surveyors supposed to do that, so, so that they can go out and make sure that we're not doing anything across the lines.
I guess more for staff, but parking requirements for this whole project. I don't see anything listed anywhere as to how many parking places this development needs. Was it?
Yeah, they had my chapter verse. I thought, yeah, okay. I think it's, I think it's okay.
I got a question.
Maybe I missed it. One thing, I wasn't sure what the commercial building was going to be required, because you don't really know what it's going to be.
I, I know we, we did review the parking plan with them during TRT, and we were happy.
Maybe you didn't show it to me later. And that is, is this development, is the Beckwith Hill Development District trip, would fees still apply to this?
Yes.
Okay. So, they're aware of that.
We are aware of that. We've not, I mean, I'm not sure if, if those are paid upon this approval or with the building permit.
They, they would be paid before the building permits, yeah.
So.
John, I have a question along the lines of stormwater stuff.
Yep, go ahead.
So, Scott, in drawing C-seven.
And around there.
You've got, this, this, this whole drawing has to do with catch basins?
I think that should be a, that should be a manhole, a manhole detail, not a catch basin detail.
Okay, so precast manhole.
Yep.
It says catch basin protection detail.
Says catch basin, I'm sorry, catch basin what?
And then it says.
Inlet protection detail.
Yeah, catch basin protection.
Yep, that is, that is actually intended for the catch basin just downstream. So, when we're tearing out the pavement and redoing the stuff along Route, along, I'm going to say Route three.
So, this is for existing, you're saying existing?
That is for the existing catch basins on High Street.
Go ahead. All right.
So, there are catch basins on High Street?
There are, there's a catch basin just below the street that goes by between us and Dairy Queen. And so, when we are tearing out curb, putting in new curb, we will, that inlet protection will be in place.
Is there, where does, where does the water that goes in those catch basins go?
That is part of the city system, and I can honestly tell you, I have no idea where it is.
Card Brook.
Card Brook.
Card Brook. No wonder Card Brook is this good shape.
And then down to the Union River.
Yeah, right, okay. I, I go back to the amount of water that's going out the, the driveway there. Is there any way, and I, and I, this is not a requirement, this is a question, to put some sort of drain at the end of the driveway that would tie into those catch basins or whatever? I mean, I'm not looking to give anybody heartburn, but it just seems to me that a bunch of water coming out of a. Give it some thought, maybe? I don't know. I don't know that we have the ability to make that a condition of approval or anything like that, and I'm not really suggesting that, but might be nice if something could happen. He's making notes, but he's not smiling, I can see that.
No, no, I'm taking notes. I, I'll look at it.
Yeah.
I want to get back to the circulation, basically, well, for the car wash and the vacuum. I just kind of curious about that. I mean, I mentioned, well, somewhat of a competitor, the Washfield car washes and one of those. I mean, are these, their vacuums, I mean, you pull in, and it's included on cost of the car wash. You pull in as a vacuum on your right side, vacuum on your left side, which is kind of what it looks like here, or?
These are, the, if you go up and look at, I mean, I can't tell you that it's the exact same vendor, but this is, this is based off that same design, where the car wash, you, yeah, you pull up and there's, there's vacuums between the parking spaces.
Okay. But I mean, if, if, if Dice Arts includes vacuuming with car wash, there's a lot of people that go to the vacuums that normally won't. I mean, get it for free, so, I mean, that circulation, I think, is going to be, and I don't know if they plan on doing that, that the vacuum is.
That I can't answer.
Okay.
I don't know.
But it screws up, if they, if they simply go into the, to the vacuum spot, they're, they're not going to want to, and they're going to try not to go all the way around and follow your traffic flow. They're going to, you know, kind of go across and cut.
Right. I think in general.
Kind of the opposite way of the flow.
If you, if you look at the way the site's laid out with one in and one out, in a perfect world, that means everybody's just doing this.
No, I get what happens.
But that is why we designed this with two-way aisle widths all the way around the building. So, if somebody comes out of the car wash and wants to get to a vacuum spot.
For example.
There is, there's twenty, there's over twenty-four feet of width here, so they can do that, they can make that maneuver.
And is the vacuuming, I mean, there's a, a, I mean, you, you pay right at the vacuum for the vacuuming, right?
Again, I can't answer that, but I think that's correct.
Because I mean, even though, you know, you have a, the north entrance is, north curb cut is for entrances, and the south one is for exits, that's not necessarily going to happen, because you're going to have some people drive by the north entrance. That's not necessarily going to happen because you're going to have some people drive by the north entrance. Oh, oh, here's another driveway.
And again, I guess the best we can do is put signage in, up and hope that 98% of the people pay attention to it.
How wa, how wide is that driveway?
They're both amply wide, yeah. They're amply wide, yeah, for two.
So if a car was waiting to turn right out, so we get a car illegally behind and going in.
Brittany, maybe you can check with the police department. I mean, the, the crash data that's included, because of lack time with MDOT, did not include 2024. I think they should be able to provide some info as to, with their crash reporting system, they should be able to provide information as to, you know, basically in that same stretch from, from the traffic light at McDonald's to Short Street, you know, what the crashes were in 24.
Awesome, that's neat.
The key thing is what happens at Short Street.
Uh, I think that's all I have.
Scott, I got one other question for you that I forgot to ask. So in drawing C6, it's a detailed drawing, on your underground pavement trench detail, so, and you just have to educate me here, the off-road electrical trench does not need rebar? Is that correct?
Typically off-road, now, this is Versant down here.
What's that?
This is Versant down here, yes?
Yes.
Yes. So, and I think you'll find our typical exclusion note on there that the final determination of that stuff is, you know, will be up to the applicable utility. But as a rule, once it's out of the right of way, they have not made us use the con, the concrete encasement of the conduit. Under the road, they do.
Okay, so even though there's heavy truck traffic possibly going to be?
Yeah, they, they don't require it because we're used, because they're using, I think, Versant, it's, it's Schedule 80 PVC conduits what they require. I think. I'm looking to Robert E. Matt Cherry.
It's in the right of way. It's not my job.
There you go.
Just curious.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, even though it's not listed on the agenda, we do have a public hearing for this item. If there's anybody here that wants to ask a question or make a comment. Or if not, I will close the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion. We find the preliminary plan review for major use site, uh, major use site development plan, complete, entitled, and entitled Dice Arts Convenience Store for applicant and owner, Dice Arts Realty Operations LLC.
My second. All in favor? And all's up, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, I know.
Just off the record, what's your last name again?
Brayley.
Brayley?
Yes.
Gary, relation to Gary Brayley?
Never met the man.
Okay. He was new to it for a long time.
That is my dad. Yeah, he worked for DOT forever.
Really?
Yeah.
I knew, I knew, I worked with him.
Yeah.
In 19, a long time ago.
19, a long time ago.
Yeah, 19, a long time ago.
Yeah, he worked for the DOT for a very long time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, we were at the main facility together.
Oh, it was Litchfield?
Yeah.
Which is now a solar field.
Yes, actually I'm aware, right?
We're talking about, we designed for him.
And, and the curb cut's still there though for the, for the, for the office.
Sure is. That was a neat building.
I assume that he's no longer with us?
No, he is.
Oh, really?
86 years old, small scrap.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me give you my card and give it to him.
I will. Thank you very much. That'll make his day.
Maybe. Yeah, right.
Well, I was surprised he's still alive, so he gave me some, be surprised I'm still alive.
Time to run and get your plate out. Want to give one of mine?
One of this, that's right.
Brittany, I will circle back to these. No, I'm sure in, that's all. I will give it to you tomorrow, sure.
Please.
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. Tell them hello.
What do you need?
I will. I can bring off a bunch of those.
You can have one. You can have mine. You can have mine.
See, I actually. Just like John.
Okay, item number four. Okay, before we get into it, I had to make a change to the wording of item number four. Because it's not a final plan review of a minor subdivision, it's a preliminary review of a major subdivision. So, I'll have to have the board make a motion to amend item number four to read preliminary plan review of a major subdivision, entitled 59 Franklin for applicant Cory Regan and owner 59 Franklin LLC. Proposal is to construct six dwelling units on a lot within existing structure subdivision. Subject property is approximately 0.27 acre lot located at 59 Franklin Street, tax map 134 lot 33 in the downtown zone district.
Second.
Okay. So all in favor of changing that?
Okay.
Absolutely.
A little explanation of why we're here because we've been here before, Cory's been here before. Actually, on, we approved phase one and phase two of, that was exactly what he's got before us. Reason for at this point is that a couple of months ago, I noticed a, an ad online advertising the front apartment on the North Wing, right on Franklin Street, being advertised as a commercial space. Everything was approved as residential. I mentioned that to Rob to get in touch with Cory, to tell him, you know, it was approved as commercial. During that process, Rob found out that our ordinance requires that the prior two approvals be filed with the registry deeds with 100 days. That didn't happen. We have a letter from Tim Pease, the city lawyer, saying because of that, the prior approvals were null and void. So we have to basically start over. Now, we did one and two, so we don't have to do one and two together. So we'll basically come back here today to go over one and two, but it's just one, one submission.
Correct. It's still phased by North Wing and South Wing.
Right. But we're not handling it. Previously, we did, did it in two different approvals. But now we're here to discuss the whole project.
Is this thing under construction though, right?
There are currently stop work orders in place.
Continuing on the existing residential renovations and maintenance on building, which Robert agreed was appropriate.
Okay.
So there is still work occurring, but not on conversion itself.
Yeah, the, the second story apartments were pre-existing, so they're, they're exempt from this offer.
Right, right.
When you say second story, do you mean second story off of Franklin?
Second story for, yeah, the, the.
Level three on the plan.
Thank you very much.
The top story, yeah, sorry, the top story.
Thank you.
Maybe you should count down.
I mean.
So I'd like to address your point, which we were coming in as, thinking it was a final until just Monday when Brittany emailed me. During the TRT, they asked us to remove a portion concerning that storefront, being that if this was a final, we couldn't address retaining that as commercial or we have to start preliminary. So we removed it. Now being pushed back to preliminary, our goal long-term would be to be able to file a change in use with the code office for the storefront if somebody were to want it as a commercial space. And I know that's been done in the past, being able to go from commercial, residential and back within the code office without having to complain forward.
Yes, correct. And I've discussed that with Rob and that's perfectly allowable.
Okay.
And basically the reason, I mean, we're back here, I know originally it, it said we're here for a final.
Correct.
But our ordinance stipulates mandates that we have a preliminary and a final. And once, especially since Tim Pease, the lawyer, said, you know, because of the fact that they weren't registered, basically nothing exists. So we had to go back to the requirement that we have a preliminary and a final. And the good, good thing is, we've seen it before. And so there may be some questions to just refresh our memories on it. But, I mean, is there anything you want to present? I mean, I've got some questions I know some.
Um, it's identical to the last two phases just combined. So I guess if you want me to run through it or if you just want to go to the questions?
Uh, we'll go to the question. I, I think one thing, and I don't recall, in, in the application. Okay, the proposed use of the development is eight dwelling units, one office, two garage bays. Cory, I mean, previously, did it specify one office and two garage bays previously? Does anybody remember that?
Yes, those were always pre-existing.
Okay, I, I know they're there. I don't know if this is trying to say you're trying to do something different with them?
Uh, no, it just proposed uses. We listed every single space that was there.
They're there.
Right.
And the one office is, tells us it's American.
Correct. They have one of the garage bays and the other one is just currently vacant.
Okay.
And two of those eight dwelling units are pre-existing, so six dwelling units from what was commercial space, a restaurant. South Wing was four individual commercial offices.
I don't know, from the staff's point of view on the, on the, the application, under development information for the K, what is intended start and completion dates of the proposal, 1, 2024 to 12, 2025? I don't know if that's.
We left the original start date in.
Change or, it's, I guess that's more for staff to decide now.
Yeah, we left it as 1, 2024 because that's when work did begin on the building. It was actually paused for the entirety of the summer.
Questions?
I do. So Cory, there's a couple of things on the plans that you have submitted to us, whether they were from before or just updated or, I, 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 I don't know. But I know in the, I don't know, did you receive the most recent letter from the fire chief?
Correct.
Okay. So the concern about exiting or escape, means of escape, let me put it, that, that's the proper, that's the proper language, means of escape, from the common living area, I think is addressed in the most current, in where they are allowing for egress windows out of the common living area.
Correct.
Okay. Put early on, on both sides, on both the Water Street side and the Franklin Street side from that common area.
Yeah.
We need to have those egress windows identified as egress windows on your plan here. So that basically just show that they're egress windows when you come next week, next time for final, so that we have that as, as on file. The other thing is that if you could please, and I know, I know it's also addressed, if you could, on your plan here, identify the firewall and the type or basically the fire resistant rating as to where it is located on, in the building.
How would you like those?
I, I don't need the detail, just basically what, what the designation of the firewall is.
The last time we did that, it confused the board.
Where the firewall was?
Yeah, I mean, it's between every single unit. As would be required by fire. And the entirety of the South Wing, every single wall in that building will be a rated wall.
Okay. So you're saying between 58 Water Street to B and 59 Franklin Street, 1D, that's a firewall between those two?
Correct.
Okay. And then between 2B and 1D, that's a firewall between there and the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay. So each one of the walls that you're saying that's in that, in that space is all one-hour rated walls?
Correct.
Okay.
Although the state fire marshal told us we only had to comply with half-hour rating.
I'm not aware of that. I was aware of the one hour. I'm not aware of the half hour, but.
I, I'm not aware of a half-hour rated wall with, with a 13D sprinkler system. By, by NFPA and the building code, it's required to be a one-hour rated wall. I don't know, a half-hour rated, what are you using for size sheet rock? Fire, 5/8s fire code?
Type X.
Type X 5/8s on, on both sides of the wall?
Yes. But I had a conversation with Joshua today who mentioned this project would only require half-hour rated.
I, I guess you better research that and come back with us on the final, on that. Because I, I, I am not aware of a half-hour firewall in life safety code or the building code for, for a 13D sprinkler system.
Well, shouldn't we be researching that rather than him?
Uh, he was looking at chapter 30, 30.3, 7.2. Again, that's not in my purview, but he gave me the chapter and, and rating and he said with that it was one half-hour rating. Joshua Mailman with the.
I don't think so.
State Fire Marshal's plan review.
Can you, can you forward that to me and I'll follow up?
Yeah, um, these are intended to be one hour anyways because type X does a lot better at managing sound.
I mean, if you're doing 5/8s fire code on both sides, I mean, that's a one-hour fire rated wall.
Correct.
So why does he have to research it?
So, right, so it's, it's a moot point, but just identify the walls as one-hour rated.
Well, that's fine. You can request that.
Because a half-hour fire rated wall or a half-hour wall or a 20-minute wall is half-inch sheet rock. And I don't think you want to use half-inch sheet rock.
No, it doesn't block any sound.
Sound deadening either. So.
That was the first time I heard it also. Everything was an hour.
Yeah, it should be, it, it should be one-hour rated if you look at the building code and life safety code.
He just said it was.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is it needs to be identified.
He can identify that.
That's fine.
So he doesn't have to research it. If you want to research it on your own time, go ahead.
All right, all right. I mean, the, the way he's building them, from what I understand, they're going to be one-hour firewalls. That's what's required, right?
Exactly.
That's what he's doing. Okay, that's fine. So the next, my next point, Cory, is on the 58 Water Street side, the deck.
Correct.
Can you identify where the stairs are that goes down to grade level? Because there is none on this drawing.
Do you have stairs, Cory?
Is that a requirement? There's a staircase within the unit that is just for deck, not to.
Staircase within the unit? Which unit?
You, you said?
Just the, the deck on the backside?
2A.
On 58? Okay.
The majority of it meets grade?
On 58 Water Street?
On 58 Water Street?
Yeah, Water Street side.
Um, why does there have to be a staircase there?
Why does it have to be a what?
Why would there have to be a staircase on the deck?
A stair?
Isn't that how they get to the?
No, they get to it on the south side of the building.
Right. How do you get down from the deck to grade level?
It's ground level.
It's, no, it's not. Not that portion.
At the south side?
A portion of it is.
Yes.
The leftmost side of the South Wing, about three quarters of it.
Yes.
Is grade level.
Yes.
And then it drops down to the two garage bays. That deck for 58 Water Street 2A would be over the walkout basement unit. But I guess I'm asking, what is the need to have a staircase to get to grade level?
I didn't say staircase. It just, if you get, if I come out of apartment 2B on, on the Water Street side to the deck, where do I go to get down to grade?
Okay, yep, you would turn left.
Okay.
And approximately the media, the middle of the building is where it meets grade and you would exit the deck.
And so if I turn left and go this way, left, am I going to come out at grade on that end?
Yes.
Correct, in the middle of the building. So in the middle of the South Wing is at grade. On the Water Street side.
So opposite two C transitions to grade level.
Approximately, yes. So you just want to see the.
Yes.
Designation.
Yes, please.
Yep. I thought we were talking about specifically, um, fifty-nine Water Street two A, because they enter, exit their unit from within.
Yeah, that's an interior stair. It's an interior protective stair. I see that because that's actually on the other drawing. On, um, that shows it. In the, I guess the, whatever, whatever plate that is, but that shows the interior stair. I just was concerned as to how you get off that deck to grade level.
Um, I'm, I'm, please do your application, Corey, under nine eleven addressing. So the building will contain two separate street addresses, which we know, fifty-nine Franklin Street. And list, you know, what the addresses are going to be, just one A, B, C, D. Goes up to one G, but I don't see a one G. I mean, that might just be a mistake on, on the application. Is there a one G? On the Franklin Street side? And it looks like the one A, B, and C is in the north wing, D, E, and F.
Yeah, that appears.
Okay, just, just like I missed type.
Yeah, you're correct. It ends at F.
And then the fifty-eight, excuse me, Water Street. Units with access facing Water Street, you have listed one A, B, C, two A, B, C, D. But is, is, aren't you missing two E, which would be the southernmost, the corner unit?
It appears so. Yeah, I think what had happened was the four were in the front and three were in the back at one point.
Is this on level, what level?
They, uh, Franklin Street.
Two.
Two. It's on the, yeah, level two. It, it's just misnumbering on the.
Okay.
Application versus the site plan. I guess, I have one question for staff, but it has to do with the water department. I mean, specifies that it's going to have fifteen hundred thirty dollars a day. However, I recommend reviewing the water table usage per person, which is approximately a hundred one gallons. Framist have provided calculations. Additionally, a three quarter inch meter may be restrictive. In terms of flow, may not adequately support domestic water. Man, as you know, every connection fitting elbow or bend in the plumbing system contributes to friction loss, which can impact water flow to ensure adequate volume and pressure for the building. I recommend considering a two inch domestic service line and meter. Normally, water says, I want a one inch line, I want a two inch line. I mean, is this, I, I guess, are you putting in a two inch line?
That was the recommendation we're going to go with. My plumber is also doing his own calculations based on number of units, faucets, all that sort of stuff. But he said, two inches probably sufficient, and he said, we may as well go bigger.
Bigger than two?
Well, no. At first, I think someone recommended one, and he said, we may as well do two, because once you have the open road permit, we may as well do larger than necessary. So he's doing a calculation that's going to get us close to where it's going to be, and then basically size it up.
Do you want that in the application, two inch?
No, if, um, if he's planning on, on doing it. I'm, I was just afraid if you're going to go for the small size and, and Reggie's saying, well, I recommend.
Right.
But he's not saying, I'm telling you to put in a two inch, that, you know, you get to a point where a one inch line is not going to adequately service the building. And that's going to be a problem for you and the tenants, and I don't know if that would affect the sprinklers, the sprinkler system if.
They assume they have a separate system?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, it sounds like you go with two inch.
Yes.
That solves the problem. I have, I have a question for the fire chief. On, on your letter, I guess, based on our review, we require the following conditions of master project approval. I'm just curious about number one, fire apparatus access roads. And I'm guessing that's just a standard, no real access roads on it?
That was a part of the original letter. It just had to do with the, the condition of the, uh, the driveway for apparatus.
Okay.
And it's sufficient, is it?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
It hasn't changed from the original letter.
I see.
Okay, the, uh, last thing I am concerned about is the new letter from Franklin Savins Bank. Which basically says, as of this writing, the bank is awaiting approval from the city of Ellsworth, along with a revised updated appraisal to reapprove your funding. Which is not sufficient in our mind. I mean, the, the letter financial capacity capability is proving to us that you have the means to do it.
It goes on to say that right below.
The way I read it is, is the bank is waiting approval from us, and then they're going to make their final determination that you have the funds to do it.
I mean, can I ask you to reach out to Tim Tunny yourself? Because he would probably like to hear that directly. Essentially, the time has passed and some things have changed with the project versus, our original loan was a one-time close plus construction. And because it's been nearly two years since we closed and we kept tenants in and let them phase out, some project items that we pitched were taken off, so he said that they're going to go for the reappraisal. I don't know why he put in, he just knows that I was coming back to planning board for reapproval. So I guess, I don't know if you want me to reach out to him or you guys directly. I'm sure he's willing.
I think that would be up to you. I mean, just the way he words it, I mean, it kind of sounds like they're going to fund you, but.
No, I did include, it shows the loan, the balance available, the loan is still active, which I did include in the packet.
I mean, it, uh, I think basically, I mean, the, the first one you had from him, met our requirements. So if he, he just does something like that with a new date on it, I mean, the one you submitted was from twenty-three.
Correct.
So that's why we asked for an, an updated one.
Yep.
So it just basically followed the same format as that one from twenty-three.
Uh, he essentially said he wouldn't be able to do that because of their protocol in terms of getting the appraisal back, and it goes to loan committee for the reapproval.
Then maybe staff needs to have, give Mr. Tunny a call, although.
Um, I mean, is it possible to show that we can fund the project without a loan? Because we've currently funded, our group has put four hundred thousand into the project without the loan.
Uh, I think your ordinance states that you have to have a letter of financial capacity. I guess that'd be something for staff to determine. I mean, he can provide something like he did on the first time through, that type of letter. And perhaps, Brittany, you have contact with Mr. Tunny and try to figure out an appropriate letter.
I'll double check the ordinance and work with them.
Mr. Weingard, I, I truly do believe in that letter from Mr. Tunny, that, that last sentence could be rewritten in such a fashion that it may be more acceptable to the board.
Uh, the one that says we remain qualified.
No, the, the, the first paragraph, last sentence.
First paragraph, last sentence.
I think that that phrase could just, that sentence could be rewritten, chat G P T.
In terms of regarding the city approval?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, he seems to throw a caveat in there, which presumably is.
So part of their appraisal review was seeing the city approval.
Sure.
So they're both relying on each other.
Yes.
So I'm hopeful that we can find a path forward.
Sure.
It's called a catch twenty-two.
Yeah, double edged sword.
I'm not an English major, but it seems like it's a simple, English compensation was not my forte.
I'm not going to say a word.
Okay, I don't have anything else. I will open the public hearing. Is anybody here? Uh, nobody here? I'll call the public hearing. Any other questions?
Well, actually, one last question. You want to go ahead?
Yeah.
We did change the agenda item, um, and do we want to go ahead and change the planning department technical review to say preliminary?
I'll, I'll update that.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Procedural.
Preliminary of a major. Oh, you can write, you can, okay, the, uh, we have a, uh, proving for completeness, a preliminary plan review of a major subdivision entitled fifty-nine Franklin for applicant Cory Wigan and owner fifty-nine Franklin LLC.
Is there a second?
Sure, second.
For the paper. They're all set, Corey?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Do we fight over the mic? You got nothing?
Do you want me to have something?
I have something.
Well, did you want to discuss how we're going to move forward on applicants for planning board?
Yes, we can talk, yes. How would you like to progress on the planning board applicants? You should all have, there are three applicants. You should all have them in your packets.
Yes.
Before we might as stand, uh, the first one who works at Canadian National Park has applied for the planning position.
Yes.
Well, he's applied to the planning, the planning board, not the planning board.
He's applied both.
Ah, well, he can't have them both. I'm just telling you, I, you know, we have a conflict here somehow.
Is that on Matthew?
I guess I would ask.
But.
Well, the deputy city manager. When do you foresee when a planner would be hired?
Sure, so, uh, would like to kind of keep the name of the applicant, you know, disclosed at this point.
Yes.
Just for privacy of, of that, but we are, this group, um, is reviewing the first, the round of applicants right now. We received probably fifty applications.
Did you say fifty?
Yeah.
Five zero, yes. Um, so we are reviewing and scoring them right now, hoping to have that done by the end of this week. Reach out to our top, um, schedule interviews for the next couple of weeks. Um, depending on how that goes, I mean, I am hopeful probably by the end of May, having someone on board. Uh, depending on how they have to, you know, give notice at their current position and relocate possibly, or something like that.
I understood that the shortlist is about four or five?
That's our goal, yeah.
Usually do that, yeah.
Yeah, that's the goal.
I'm just concerned with, you know, I don't want to eliminate that candidate that's applied for both from the planning board, because in case he doesn't get the planning position. But by the same token, I don't want to go for another couple of months with two vacancies on the planning board.
When is the next planning board meeting? I'm sorry, I don't have that in my head.
First week of May.
Yeah.
Um, I think that we probably will have a good idea about what's happening at that point. Um, so if we could hold off until then.
That will be May seventh.
So if you're comfortable with, um, that, waiting until May seventh, um, but certainly, I don't know what the process is to have somebody, you interview the planning board candidates. What is your process? So we can maybe.
That's really varied over the years.
Okay.
I mean, I actually had an interview with two or three people. We haven't done that since, as far as I know.
And considering we have.
They said it didn't work very well, so what the hell?
Just a warm body. Yeah. Are you willing to show up?
Considering we have three applicants for two positions, uh, I mean, one thing Brittany mentioned is maybe instead of having interviews with the whole board, have you and me and staff interview, at least, you know, the initial interview, and then then maybe a follow-up with the whole board.
For the, for the planning board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I personally didn't, and I liked the process that I had to go through. I thought that was kind of appropriate. And the idea that what, suddenly people appear, no offense. You know, is, is less desirable as a general rule.
I've been around for over forty years.
I mean, I think.
And we still took it.
My preference would be to have it be as clean as possible, and let's finish up the planner position. First round interviews at the very least, which can certainly accommodate that schedule. Maybe there could be some email correspondence with Brittany and you, John, to let you know how that's proceeding. So then you could start your interview process shortly thereafter. So maybe you could start your process before the next meeting, if that would work.
Rather not say that this one applicant is going to have a first interview or?
I would not feel comfortable saying that, um, right now.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
So what, when do you think that would be determined as to who you give first interviews to?
I think it will be determined by the end of this week, our top candidates.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do it by Friday.
So I think that could give us a little bit of guide to, I mean, if that person is not in it, then we could set our interviews up the week after one of them. If it, if he is being interviewed, then we could interview the other two and wait.
Sure, so, um, hopefully, like I said, it's, it's a lot of extra work, the fifty applicant review for staff. So hopefully we'll have something done by Friday, and Brittany can reach out to you and let you know how you should proceed. Based on our top candidates.
Sounds good.
I'm taking them home for homework tonight, so. I've got about a third of them done.
A third of the fifty?
Yeah.
I would just like to say for the record that I finished mine first.
Well, extra points for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, they, they had Brittany and I locked out of the square members. We couldn't input. She had an unfair advantage.
Yeah, that was my, that was my approach to it, lock you guys out. Anything else for me?
Uh, nope.
Okay.
Anything else, Brittany?
Nothing that comes to mind.
We do have a date for the.
We do?
May, first week of May.
marijuana?
For, yes, for the, for the, for the rec, yeah, I didn't want to say joint session, but yeah.
I think we should have, because that was pretty clever.
Pretty good.
And so, so there is a date?
It's the first week of May, but I can't remember the date off the top of my head. Yeah, it was decided. Uh, Ebony told me at the all staff meeting, but I can't remember what it was. But it's the first week of May.
I think it's May first.
Is it May first?
May first is the Thursday.
That would be the first week of May.
Okay, so that's the council and the board. Will there be public input?
I believe so.
I believe so.
Okay.
The public, yeah, the public.
Okay.
But there's no, there are no decisions at that meeting.
No.
That's just information exchange and whatnot.
Yes.
So May first, you said?
I believe that's the date.
Right.
Because Sarah says what we're going with.
We'll confirm and I'll send out that mass email to everyone.
I just wanted people to write down special weed meeting in my book. Joint session, joint session, right, right.
Do we happen to know what happened with the ordinance in Surrey regarding retail? Do we have any idea?
I, I don't think it went well.
Well, here's the thing, the reason I asked the question. I went into the Surrey market the other day for a sandwich. And all on the front counter by the register was marijuana.
Oh, maybe we did, but, oh, I'm thinking the short term rental didn't go well.
Oh, yeah, the short term rentals didn't go well, but I thought Surrey was pushing the marijuana out to the outskirts of town. And here we are in the heart of town, and the owners are selling marijuana right on their front counter. That can't be medical, I can't imagine, I don't know.
You'd have to have a path, um, card to get medical marijuana.
Right, and there's.
You can't get into the store if you don't have a card.
By cigarettes or marijuana, it was the most outstanding, I, I was like flabbergasted.
Why not both?
Oh, no.
No, in all seriousness, though, uh, uh, staff is working on a, a map to show.
Yes.
A buffer for where they can and can't go.
Yes.
Uh, based on the state rules, they can't be within three hundred feet of schools.
Schools, churches.
Churches, we're going to do public parks and daycares and that sort of thing as well. To show where realistically they can go. I don't want to tip my hand too much yet, but to say that it's probably going to be mostly in the development district.
Yes.
By the time we, we end up finding the appropriate spots for at least the first round of stores will be in most of the development district, I'm guessing.
That's what that meeting's for, to kind of flush all that out.
That's just a sneak preview, I guess.
Has staff been gathering other ordinances from other towns?
Sure.
Kind of give us a, like a.
We'll have it all ready for you, one short month.
And it's going to be a short month, it's April.
So is that, uh, and the city will have to extend the moratorium, then they vote in a six month moratorium?
I, I think so, yes, but I don't, yeah, they'll have to extend the moratorium.
Yes.
Which would.
Be soon.
Soon.
Yes, so we might want to do that.
Because I think they did that at a special meeting, I believe, right after the election.
I'll have to review the tape.
There you go. Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.